Good evening and thank you for joining us for our September 28th Board of Education meeting. Will you please join us in a pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll start off with the report of the superintendent.
Thank you. Good evening and thank you for joining us for our September 28th Board of Education meeting. We are back to holding in-person board meetings, but we must still be mindful of State Department of Health restrictions on the number of people allowed in school buildings, so we are also continuing to broadcast our meetings on YouTube. Tonight's top billing, and a huge thank you, has to go to the Rye Fire and Police Departments who responded to Parsons Street this afternoon around 12:30 when a full-size deer slipped on the street and became lodged underneath a parked car and was braying quite loudly. The fire department managed to free the deer after about 20 minutes and it headed down off Milton Road, hopefully to much greener pastures. I'm sorry to have to report that we did have two cases of COVID-19 at the tail end of last week and one yesterday, one case at Osborne School and two at Milton. The cases at Milton did result in a small number of quarantines based on exposure. We are exploring some possible changes to lunch seating in the elementary schools in an attempt to provide additional social distancing to further reduce potential quarantines. Once we're able to definitively make any changes, I will be sure to share that information with the community. At the end of last week, CDC Director Rochelle Walensky gave final approval for the Pfizer BioNTech booster shots and recommended that teachers and school staff receive those boosters. I know many of our teachers and staff have already scheduled their shots, but we're also working with the Department of Health and hoping to be able to open a pop-up clinic to provide those booster shots so they're easy and convenient for them to receive. Our Surveillance COVID-19 Testing Program for Students will restart very soon. This year Surveillance Testing is being organized by Westchester County in conjunction with the district. Our testing partner will be Mount Sinai Hospital once the contract between Westchester County and Mount Sinai is approved. We will share more detailed information with the community as soon as we have it. Additionally, by order of Governor Hoco, all school employees are now required to show proof of vaccination or be tested weekly. While the great majority of our staff is vaccinated, those requiring weekly testing began testing yesterday, Monday, the 27th. Also yesterday, the district began administering a universal screener to evaluate academic progress in reading and math to all students grades K to 8. This round of screening will continue through October 8th, and there will be two additional screening windows this year in the winter and in the spring. Dr. Tricia Murray, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, held an online Q&amp;A about the screening program on the 20th. If any interested parent wasn't able to attend, there is a link to a video recording of the meeting in the Curriculum Department section of the district's website. Due to continuing restrictions on large numbers of people in school buildings, all of the district's Back to School nights are again virtual this year. All three elementary schools held their Back to School nights last Wednesday, RMS was on Thursday, and Rye High School will take place on Thursday, October 7th at 6:30 p.m. and so far they've been going very well. The first Herd and Rye event of the school year is coming up tomorrow night at 7:00 p.m. The topic is "Timely: Demystifying Executive Function and How to Get Our Kids Ready for School." Herd and Rye asks that you register in advance using the link on their website. Finally, it has been great to see our student athletes back out on the fields. On Friday night, the varsity football team took on the headless Horsemen of Sleepy Hollow at Nugent Stadium. This is the first Friday Night Lights event in two years for many of our community, and I'm happy to report the stands were full for a 35-14 win over the Horsemen, and the team is currently undefeated. Over the summer, 70 of our modified football helmets that were sent to Riddell in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania were destroyed in a factory fire. I'm happy to report that after a relentless search for our Director of Athletics, Susan Reeve Delay, the Yonkers and Millbrook School District will loan us helmets for our fall season. We're not able to purchase new ones because they're just not available due to shortages. We're so grateful to Yonkers and Millbrook and their Boards of Education for approving the loan. This coming Saturday is the game, which is being held at McGillicuddy Stadium at Harrison High School this year. Gates open and tickets go on sale at 1:30 p.m. and kickoff is at 3:30 p.m. I hope to see many of you there on game day at Let's Go Garnets.
Thank you very much, Dr. Byrne, and thank you again for the quick and swift movement on looking at those lunch seating arrangements. I think that's, you know, again, one of the things that we've learned over the last year and a half is moving quickly and examining stuff and reevaluating and see how we can make things better. So thanks very much. I'm very excited about the game on Saturday. Let's Go Garnets. So moving on, we will go to our first presentation and discussion of summer professional learning.
Hi, good evening. I'll be presenting the professional learning from this past summer as well as the professional learning that will occur this year. Our professional learning is deeply rooted in the Rye commitment. The Rye commitment has a promise to the faculty that will provide professional learning that's high-quality, relevant, meaningful, and allows us to evolve and expand our practices. So we always keep this in the back of our, at the front of our minds as we are planning professional learning for our faculty. In addition, the type of professional learning that we provide also addresses the dispositions that we look to foster within our students around critical thinking and creative problem-solving and effective communication. So any experience we offer our faculty is really to that end as well. So there are a number of in-service courses and book studies that took place this past summer in the areas of literacy, mathematics, social-emotional learning, and technology. The summer began with a literacy institute. About 25 teachers participated, mostly K to 2 teachers, and it focused on phonics and phonological awareness. So our K to 2 teachers were finishing up their first year of teaching the Teachers' College Phonics Program, so allowed them to reflect on that and make adjustments for this coming school year. And then they also focused on phonological awareness, knowing that that really is the foundation for students' literacy development. And they learned about an assessment that we, a phonological awareness assessment that we've started putting in place this fall and looked at the data that will come from that as well as the supports that the teachers now have to help kids who have any gaps in those areas. We also held an Orton-Gillingham training for classroom teachers, so part of our partnership with the Haskins Lab for this year is to provide training for a cohort of classroom teachers. At the end of this year, they'll have their classroom teacher-level Orton-Gillingham certification. 18 teachers participated in that in the summer. That's where they got their content and learned about the Orton-Gillingham lesson and all the different components. And then throughout the year, they receive coaching from that Orton-Gillingham instructor. And she watches them teaching and gives them feedback. We expanded our project Lead the Way this summer. We had an additional teacher participate, so a total of three teachers participate over the summer, and they just, and they learned skills and strategies in the areas of robotics and engineering to use with students. We started our fourth cohort of project-based learning fellowship. We're excited to keep this program going. There were eight teachers involved in our fourth cohort. They work with Jill Akers, who's one of our consultants. They do their design of their unit over the summer, and then during the school year, she works and coaches them as they're implementing the unit. We also had Diane Cunningham with us this summer. She did the curriculum design and the collaborative inquiry fellowship, so she worked with another kind of, sort of a cohort model, worked with two different groups of teachers, where they either designed curriculum that was closely related to the Rye commitment, looking at creating rubrics, really thinking about authentic assessment, and they designed a new curriculum that they're implementing this year. She's also continuing her work as they're doing that implementation. And we also are implementing the universal screener, as you're aware, so we brought a group of teachers together over the summer to learn about, a group of elementary teachers to learn about universal screeners and how they can be beneficial both at the school level to identify areas of strengths and maybe some areas of gaps that we have to fill, and that they also learned about how to analyze the data at the student level. So in addition to that, they also helped us with our implementation plan for the screener this year. We had an administrative retreat, which was nice, a nice three days. The whole administrative team was together, and we launched a year-long study on coaching and feedback, and that work was also led by Diane Cunningham. And then finally, we had our new teacher orientation, which was also a nice opportunity for some professional learning for our new teachers who are just coming onboard. And Brian helped with that one, and we thought it was really important for them to be exposed to the Rye commitment, of course, so we unpacked that with them. And then we did a whole session on active learning, and not only how does that connect to the Rye commitment, but how can they really use those skills and strategies to expand their own practice in their classrooms? So a lot of different offerings happened over the summer. And then this chart will, shows us the type, the different types of offerings that we had in terms of, was it fully online? Was it asynchronous? Was it blended or in-person? It shows we had a total number of 13 different in-services or book studies. We had a total of 128 people participate. And then over the summer, in addition to those in-services and workshops that were going on, we also had curriculum projects happening. So last year from Curriculum Council, there were a number of proposals that were approved, and so the writing started over the summer. And to highlight those for you, we had a World Language II course that was written over the summer for both the middle school and the high school, and that department worked with their consultant, Greg Duncan, to think about how can we write a course for World Language at year two that you can really apply to any foreign language, which was a really smart way of going about it, I felt, and it really offered some consistency across the department. We have a Hip Hop is Literature course that was written over the summer as well, that really is an English elective for our high school students, and it allows them to look at the poetics and wordplay and kind of the, you know, exciting parts of the English language. And we also added another course to our academy. It's called Action Research and Statistics. It's an interdisciplinary course, as all of the courses are there, so we're putting that one into the classroom this year. We expanded our American Sign Language program to ASL 4. That course was written. And then in our middle school, we added the Math 8 course. This was, as the others was proposed in the spring, this is going to expand our eighth graders to the number of choices that they have for math, so it would either be Math 8 or Algebra. And our music labs for seven and eight, this was sort of a, more of a curriculum renewal. Those courses were in existence, but this brings it more up-to-date and adds a technology component to it, so they can, they can study digital music production as well. There was a library crosswalk in grades seven and eight, and this was nice, very interdisciplinary because it takes the skills of library at middle school level, so information, informational skills that they then merge with ELA and social studies. So it was nice to bring those groups of teachers together to complete that work. And then at our elementary level, we have, we work with our Rye Youth Council to offer health lessons for grades three and four, and so our, and those are provided by Jessica Ladato, so she pushes in and teaches those lessons. So she collaborated with the third grade teacher as well as our K to 2 guidance counselor to rewrite the lessons, include more resources for teachers that they can support the work when Jessica's not in the classroom. So that was, it was really nice work done as well. So looking ahead, we have, as I said, as we are partnered with the Haskins Lab, we do have our Orton-Gillingham training continuing for this year. So the classroom teachers that I spoke about, they're going to continue that, and they'll be done at the end of this year with their classroom-level certification. We have our AIS teachers who are, who are in their second year, so they've already accomplished the classroom-level certification, and they're going for their associate-level certification, and they'll have that by the end of this year. So they're going to be working with their trainer, and she's going to be giving them feedback on their teaching throughout the year. And then in addition, we're excited that we're also adding on to our Orton-Gillingham training our elementary school special education teachers. They'll start the first year of a two-year training process, so by the end of next year, they'll also have their associate-level certification. We do have our fourth cohort, the Project-Based Learning Cohort, going on for this year. Like I said, working with Jill Akers, who comes to the school often every month to check in on them and give them feedback as they're teaching. We also have Diane Cunningham here throughout the year to continue that work that was started over the summer, as those teachers are implementing those units. Our universal screener work, you know, we are, we are giving it three times a year, and that's almost maybe the easy part. The more difficult part comes when it, when teachers have to really learn how to analyze it and use it for instruction, because that's the real purpose. So we're really focused on data-based instruction, and we'll be working with teams and departments on that. And then another part of our Haskins Lab work is that they're, not only do they help us with our Orton-Gillingham training, but they're also working with us on our multi-tiered system of supports, or it's called MTSS. So they have trained an MTSS team at every, at every elementary building. So when the team comes together and gets all of the data from a universal screener, the team can look at that data and say, we know that our core one, our core instruction is really strong in these areas, and here's an area we might want to look at a little bit more. So they're going to help us look at a school level at our data, so I think that's really, that was really wonderful training that we had with them so far, and I think the teachers are excited to be part of that work so they can kind of make those, that building-level analysis made a little bit clearer for the entire faculty. And then, lastly, we are starting a different type of model for our staff developers. We're starting a different kind of coaching model. And the idea behind that is they're going to be working, doing more one-to-one coaching with teachers in classrooms to really help them achieve their own individualized goals, but also the school goals. So it's a little more structured way of using our staff developers. And then we also providing that group of staff developers with some professional development, and they're going to be working also with Diane Cunningham this year on offering teachers feedback and coaching teachers and how to do that, keeping adult learning theory in mind. So they're excited about that. And so just as we had a pretty busy summer, we have a pretty busy, busy year ahead of us, and we're looking forward to offering our teachers all of these experiences. So thank you and happy to take questions.
I'll open it up to everybody, but thank you very much for this overview. There's a lot of great, robust initiatives in here and programs in here that are meant to be like kind of cross-supportive for teachers to continue to grow and develop in their practice and the data piece. I'll let Jane be effusive about that, I know how much she loves the data piece, which is such an amazing information source to have, and then the universal screener and all of it. So just, it's, it's really exciting to see how we're continuing to move the needle on all of this, so thank you. And I'll open up to the rest of the board for anyone who has questions.
Hi, I had a quick question. First of all, what a lengthy list of things that you covered over the summer, and especially since you're, you know, so new to the role, so you really have bitten off quite a bit. I wanted to ask you about the project-based learning. I think you said the cohort this year is eight teachers.
Yes.
Wondering how that compares? That number seems a little lower than some of the other cohorts, if I remember correctly, or is it about the same?
Did you know the number of previous cohorts? I thought it was around 10.
I think it's slightly lower. With all of the summer programs, one of the things we anticipated after COVID and the intensity of the year, as well as the many numbers of teachers who are working in the summer programs we're offering, that we were going to see some lower numbers in some of those opportunities.
Makes sense.
Slightly lower, not a small amount, just a small amount, but it's still a good number and a good-sized cohort.
Okay. It just raised a question in my head if, you know, how you look forward for project-based learning and how this will evolve, because I know there are quite a few teachers that have gone through, you know, in cohorts one through three, and so have you thought about, you know, what this looks like for kind of, as we go forward, as more, you know, as teachers have already completed cohorts, are there ways for them to not bite this off as a year-long project?
Yeah.
Are there smaller ways for them to be a part of different cohorts or something like that?
Yeah, I have put some thought into that. So we have a new position at the secondary level, a six-to-12 instructional coach. And one of the things that he would, I know, be able to do based on his experience is work with our teachers on project-based learning. So, and we can also think about doing that more systematically, maybe department-based. So while we've had a cohort model, if it seems as though the interest in the cohort model isn't as high as it was, there are other ways, other avenues for us to still continue that work, and I think with, you know, with the support that we have within our staff.
Okay, that's great. As a, as a parent, I hear so much positive feedback about project-based learning, and parents get jealous when, you know, another teacher in the grade level is doing it, so the more exposure our children can have to project-based learning, I think is really valuable for the whole system, so.
Agreed.
Great, thank you.
Any other?
Yes, no, I had a couple of questions more, just because I'm learning and as, you know, as I'm going here, so could you explain who Diane Cunningham is?
Sure.
She sounds great, we just love her.
Name comes up a lot.
So Diane Cunningham is a consultant, she used to work with Learning Centered Initiatives, is that the right name? She's now an independent consultant, but she, her expertise is really around authentic assessments, rubric-based work, curriculum design. You know, she has a long history with a few districts around and really helping them transform curriculum, one unit at a time, and always tying it back to the district's focus, mission, vision. So she does really smart work, from what I've seen.
And she's been working with us now?
Three years.
For three years.
Okay, great. And then just context, I agree with Callie, it's a lot that was accomplished this summer, for sure, but just context for me, I don't know how COVID has impacted or not, just participation by our teachers and course offerings, you know, just to give some context to the programming versus history.
I could just say in numbers of people, we're typically in the 300ths of staff participation in the last couple of years, and this definitely, the COVID, I think it was in the 400ths the summer before, because we did so much work for remote learning and preparing teachers for last year, but it's typically like the 250 to 350 range.
Okay.
And I think it just, there was a lot of exhaustion at the end of the year.
Yep, understandable. And typically, this, that would be the amount of courses, there's such a breadth of offerings, and typically 10, you know, you guys came in at 13, but just for my sense.
Yeah, I would say last summer, there were more, based on, we'd had to, you know, teachers were really getting up to speed on technology, so there's a lot of technology offerings last summer.
Okay. And then final question, just I know, we touched on the summer retreat at some of the work sort of integrating the DBT and the social-emotional learning, so wondering if that's more of a future thing or if that's intertwined with a lot of the work that was already done.
Right. So our, at our middle school and high school, the counselors, social workers, and psychologists were trained in DBT last year, so this year is where they're doing their implementation of it, so they're working with groups of students and utilizing DBT skills. That's something that they're really focusing on, and they're also working once a week with, with the consultant from CBC of Westchester who comes in to consult, you know, specific cases that they're, that they're working with.
I should most likely know the answer to this, but do the teachers do the professional development as, is it steps and ladders within this district in terms of, they're incentivized to do it because of pay scales and tenure, or is it just purely voluntarily?
It's a mixture of both. Not for a tenure per se, but you can get what are called in-service credits for courses, but there's only a certain number of in-service courses you can get for salary advancement. So for many of our teachers, it's just for their professional learning, and for some, it's certainly for advancement on that salary scale, but it can't, you don't advance with just in-service classes, there have to be graduate classes combined with it, but it's a mix of both.
And then, if I might add, then there is some training that is during the day that doesn't go towards any of that, it's just time set aside, we want to make sure that everybody receives it.
Got it, thanks.
As Jen said, my excitement over the day-based instruction, I mean, clearly it is very intentional that we are, as a district, going to be looking at the data, and that's really where the district is going to benefit, making those changes inside the margins, right? It's how you get from good to great, and that's just really exciting, that that's kind of where we have been able to evolve to and through in our professional learning for our staff, because I recall five years ago, probably four years, where there was really a lot of clamoring and conversation about high-quality professional learning, and that's clearly what's happening, because now you can really get into that, the meat of how we can improve instruction to improve the small things, which ultimately are the big things. I think one of the things that I heard that was really great was that you mentioned that you all were being very intentional about teaching teachers the way we want our students to experience learning, because there's nothing better than being able to take in how you want somebody to feel when you're teaching something. And so just to be so mindful about that professional experience for the teachers is just, it's very exciting to hear. And the other thing that was really great was that the idea of taking the standalone work that the Rye Youth Council has done, and it's standalone, but it's not, right? Because it's part of our curriculum, however, they are an outside organization, and now finding a way to provide resources for our teachers to be able to integrate that into their daily instruction, to continue that work. Again, that's the stuff, inside-the-margin stuff, that really just helps move us forward as a district and helps our teachers also improve their craft inside the margins, and it's just very exciting work, and I'm really, really pleased, so thank you for it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Nope, okay. Anyone from the public have a particular question or comment about this presentation? No? Okay, well, thank you very much. We look forward to hearing more about how all of these are rolling out. It's just, as I think we've heard now from several people, you know, it's wonderful how you start with the Rye commitment and intertwine all of those pieces, because that was a very purposeful and intentional vision for what we were, wanted to be able to provide for students and faculty and staff and the community. So it's, I think it's so good to see those connections and how that all fits together. So thanks, Tricia.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we will move on to the hearing of the public. So before we open that up, I just want to make a statement. We welcome and encourage our community members to address the board at this time. Please come to the podium, state your name, address, and if you are representing an organization. To ensure everyone has the opportunity to speak, please limit your remarks to three minutes, and I'm going to ask our district clerk, Lauren McGowan, who's sitting over there, to set up a timer for three minutes, so when you hear the timer go off, please wrap up your comments. The board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion, so please understand that we may not respond publicly to your comments or questions at this time. We take your comments seriously and may need more time to process and research an issue. We will ensure questions will be addressed by the appropriate staff member or possibly answered at a future board meeting. We will not entertain comments regarding individual students or district personnel, as these are protected under state and federal privacy laws. Please know we take personnel concerns very seriously. On these matters, we would ask you to follow the appropriate administrative channels. As a reminder, the community may always submit written comments at any time to the board by sending those to rcsdboard@ryschools.org. by sending those to rcsdboard@ryeschools.org.
Some of you may know me, my name is Bozidar Ivanovich, I live in 125 Central Avenue. So, we find ourselves here again discussing stuff that I did not want to discuss. Throughout last year, I was assured that changes will not be happening, that's going to take time. And here we go, last meeting and the message that came recently, changes sure are happening. What's going on? Did you ask parents about this? Or is just, we're doing this regardless? I hear the administration has given permission for the implementation of this culture of irresponsible education. As you can see, I speak my own voice now. This is really not right. The bromides coming from the state are not directives, they're guidelines. And just wanted to say one thing else, let's go to the beginning. Which particular bylaw or the state statute was used to create that so-called task force? I didn't find one, the lawyers didn't find one, interesting. So I guess it's a private club, and the only thing that was designed to do is to circumvent parental will. How do I know this? I have seen a prominent member of the RMS faculty on tape openly say, what if we put a survey to the whole community and 75% of parents says nothing is wrong with the school? So, the important thing is this club failed to do one thing that's important, which is to produce that survey, but it produced basically the regurgitated bromides from Steinhardt Center. I really reject that, those conclusions, that's nonsense. The only thing I can conclude from now is that my children are always safe in school with ideologues that are committed to implementing this. In fact, you're saying this is not happening, it is. In the last week, I intervened twice, once in high school, once in middle school, about stuff that's being presented to the kids. This is not acceptable, it's just the temper, okay? So, let me ask you this, one of the messages, one of the things in the messages is that you're saying you want to examine the ways to integrate the segregationist extremist learning, SEL, again, my own voice, into curriculum, why? Here is the bromide coming from the state. Increasing SEL competencies can decrease implicit bias, increase cultural responsiveness, and result in greater equity for New York young people, really? May I ask, does SEL also reduce the amount of Thetans in one's head? Maybe increase the number of media clorians, maybe our sons, our children will become Jedis from now on? Implicit bias is a pseudo-science. It has been debunked over the last 30 years as such. I guess the only idea that the notes haven't reached the Education Department. So what you're going to do is decrease the actual learning while increasing efforts to brainwash children with this thing that's called fashionable nonsense. Alan Sokal, who wrote a successful publication, a bogus paper, that basically claimed that gravitational waves are social constructs, basically calls this fashionable nonsense. As for equity, I really call everybody who wants equity over equal opportunity to be the leader and quit, be the quit-in equity, thank you. Now, the issue, of course, is the stuff that's already happening in school. Why am I not allowed to see the curriculum? Why am I not allowed to see this stuff? When I ask for it, I get bromides from the state. I want to see every book, every text, every tech material that's going to be presented to my children. This is not acceptable. So far, I identify English, social studies, and health as the most prominently compromised. Can I finish some? Yes, I heard it. That's two minutes. Can I finish something? Obviously, I can't finish the whole thing, but I would want to suggest something else here. Let's be constructive. No one produces a new vaccine and then sends it off to the entire population, things are tested. So, how about this? You want this, and also my fellow neighbors who want this kind of stuff, why don't you create a separate track in middle school and high school? It's easy, we already have, we already have teams in middle school, we already have RYE Academy, create, for lack of a better word, a woke school, and implement whatever the hell you want there. And for us stooges, just leave us alone, like a normal school without any of this gobbledygook. Easy stuff, otherwise we'll have bigger problems. Thank you.
Thank you very much for presenting your opinion. Anyone else?
I really laughed, flip-flop, sorry. A long way for my short legs to walk. My name is Nancy Pasquale, I live at 131 Purchase Street, number G22. And I am here today as the Coalition Coordinator for RYE Act Coalition, to share some really happy news with you as our partners in the district, that on Wednesday of last week, we were notified that we were awarded another five years of DFC grant funding by the federal government. We were one of only 54 coalitions in year six in the country to receive that funding. And I bring that to you here because, as I said at our coalition meeting last Thursday, which was literally the day after we found out about funding, that work and that success that happens is a recognition not just of the work that coalition members do and that I do as the Coalition Coordinator, or that our RYE Youth, our RYE Action, Youth Action Team, RYE Action Youth Action Team does, our Youth Coalition. It's also a recognition of the work and the partnership and the support of all of those 12 sectors of our community, of which our school district is one of the most important. So I'm here to say thank you for the work that you do every day to support primary prevention and secondary and tertiary prevention in our schools for our students. And I just want to share a few very quick things, just some successes and exciting things about, about our RYE Act Youth Action Team and about RYE Act. In our first five years of funding, first of all, you know, always, of course, the goal is youth, is reducing the prevalence of youth substance use in our communities. And the DFC program does that through these big federal grants. Again, by the time we're done with these 10 years, which is five years from now, that will be $1.25 million in federal funding that come into this community, recognizing that work that we all do together. And in our first five years of funding, of course, we've seen some significant reductions in youth substance use right here in our community, as is typical for DFC-funded communities. But what we've also seen is the growth of collaboration among community partners, which is one of the goals of the DFC program as well. We've worked with the district and community partners to create our Growing the Positive Collaborative, which is more than 30 youth-serving organizations that do shared planning and collaboration around areas of shared concern. Dr. Byrne and myself are key founding members of that group, and I totally appreciate that support because I think it has enabled us to work together collaboratively in ways that we always wished would happen and have not happened in the past. So I thank, I thank Dr. Byrne for that and for his participation in that. I also just want to share that our Youth Action Team is an example of project-based learning at its very best. So this is a group, a core group of about 20 or so students in our high school, but a group that encompasses more than 100 students from more than a dozen of our school clubs and organizations and also community clubs and organizations that collaborate, work together on initiatives such as youth mental health, suicide prevention, drug take-back days, pro-social, planning pro-social, drug-free events in the community. They do policy advocacy. I'm almost done, I promise. They participate, and they have been nationally recognized for their work. They work with, we work with Dr. Bob Dupont in the Institute for Behavior and Health, and we're the lead group in the One Choice Collaborative. Some of you may have seen last year our IM One campaign and some of our IM One videos, RYE TV helped us to create, that have been adopted nationally. So our students are doing work that is being recognized at the state, the regional, the national level. They participate every day in doing planning to solve problems for their peers and for our community around, around positive youth development, around mental health, around suicide, around substance use prevention. They're solving problems with skills that they learn in the classrooms that you help support. And I would just finish by saying that I deeply appreciate the commitment of this group and of the district in trying to work very hard and being dedicated to creating an environment in our schools that embraces all students and that takes the feedback of our students seriously, because that is prevention. Making sure that our schools are a safe and inclusive and welcoming place that celebrates the diversity that is our community and helps our young people celebrate the diversity of our larger world is prevention. And I thank you for your support in that. And woo-hoo, five more years, can't wait.
That's great news, Nancy, about the grant.
It is great news.
Thank you, Nancy. It was, it was great to see.
Such important work that's being done on multiple, multiple levels, and the student involvement is just wonderful. Okay, seeing no more public comments, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Chris Repetto, second by Vivek Maath. And I'll just go through each of the sections, and if anyone has anything they want to ask a question about, before we do the final approval, please do, but I need to do before we do that or after we approve it?
No, you do it before. So you're going to add a name to the tenure recommendation.
Okay, so when I'll get, when I get to that section, I'll do it, okay. Sorry, little administrative processing. So the consent agenda general. Anyone have any questions, comments on that? Okay. Consent agenda fiscal construction.
Again, this just goes to my, helping me think through and understand everything. Would just love for someone to explain the difference between the allowance authorizations and the change orders, sort of why they're separated out into two groups and how we think about those.
Sure, no problem. So when we embark on construction and we award contracts, or actually even before that when we go out to bid, we identify certain allowances, so allotments of funding to each of the contracts for unexpected, expected items, such as asbestos removal, particularly when you're doing reconstruction, because oftentimes you'll embark on something that is unexpected, but you do expect to have certain items such as that. Asbestos removal is one of those perfect examples where we will embark upon an area or we have to increase scope because of something that may come up that will then require additional asbestos removal that we would then have to absorb. And something like asbestos removal, the lead time getting up to that is not something we have the luxury of hovering over the summer. So you try to build in these allowances for those types of items. So that is part of the base contract that's awarded. At the end of a contract, if you do not expend all of the allowances, what you will see then is a change order that will be issued. So a change order is an unexpected, unexpected expense, if you will, that then either gets added to a contract amount, or in the instance of unused allowances, will come back as a credit to the contract amount, which reduces the overall contract amount. Does that make sense?
Yes, so the allowance authorizations were in the original budget.
Exactly.
For a general amount, and you're just drawing from that in these numbers, and then the change orders below are truly unexpected.
Correct.
And not allowed for in the original budget, but we could get it back if we don't draw on an allowance.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, and you can also experience a negative change order that may not necessarily reduce an allowance, but that may, as a result of change of scope, just be a credit toward the contract amount. So it doesn't, it's not always related to an allowance, it is just related to the course of business when doing construction, and again, specifically around reconstruction, because in this case, you're talking about a building from, that was originally erected in 1930. So certainly, things come up when you start opening walls that would require changes to what you originally thought you were going to have to do.
Thank you, very helpful.
You're welcome.
And I did have one question about, I think it was mostly in the Osborne items.
Yep.
There was some notices of overtime needed, and so just wanted to get a little background on that.
Correct. So when a contract is awarded, there's a, there's a base amount in a contract. In the event we get to an area or a situation where additional work is required that wasn't part of the base contract, for whatever the reason, contractors do have the ability to appeal to the district and the team to say, there's an additional unanticipated expense that we're asking for consideration. And in this case, I think it was overtime having to do with the electrical contractor at Osborne. What you don't see yet is, this is related to a delay of another contractor.
Well, that's, and it seemed like there had been delay to even delivery of some materials potentially.
Correct. So some are out of our control, because much of what we experienced this summer were delays of materials that put us at a disadvantage in terms of timeline and getting the contract done. Others were related to just the ripple effect of other things that have happened. So sometimes what you will see is what is a change order to increase a contract over here, may be a change order to decrease a contract over there. They don't always come through at the same time. But there is a lot of changing hands and moving of money from one contractor to another, depending on the scope of work. I'm not trying to be vague, it's just, there are a lot of moving parts. So what may look like an increase on one contract could very well be the effect of a decrease someplace else.
One, one additional note, the Osborne Electric, as you recall, we reached, you reached out to the mayor. To help us because Con Edison kept canceling the scheduled changeover. So it was an upgrade of the entire electrical system, the entire electrical service to the building. They did everything they could until the point that Con Edison had to come and change the service coming into the building. That got canceled at least twice by Con Edison because of issues on Con Edison's end. And Mayor Cohen was very helpful. We found out through this process that he has some influence with Con Ed, and that was incredibly helpful in getting that last date, which then led to some things having to happen. The changeover was on a Friday and led to some work that was happening over the weekend for the rest of the summer there.
Well, and I know in our next meeting, there'll be a capital project update, so I think, you know, it's, as you said, sometimes it's hard to see it all together when you get the individualized, which I know we have to do on an as-needed basis when they come through, but that will give us a fuller picture of where things are kind of across the board and in the larger buckets.
And just to keep in mind, so yes, we are doing an update at the next board meeting. And we are what I'm calling in Phase Two of construction, but we're not yet fully complete. So not all the dust has settled on many of the allowances and change orders that are coming before the board. So just to say that even when we sit down again in two weeks, we still may not have the completed picture of everything going on with the project. So it is a timing issue, and each and every one of these allowances and change orders that are brought before the board are scrutinized at many different levels before it even gets to this point. Our construction team looks at them, the architect team looks at them, there's a series of approvals through Rob and myself before it even gets presented at this point. So it is, it is a process that we follow.
Right, because it has to be managed extremely closely.
Uh, yeah.
Because of the nature of how.
A hundred percent.
It's done.
And then at the end of the day, there is a package that goes up to SED, because then they too give the final blessing on all of the change orders.
they too give the final blessing on all of the change orders that are accumulated in a project.
Got it. Okay. Okay. Consent agenda fiscal. Any questions? Oh, I'm sorry. Did you have a question, Vivek? Oh, all right. I thought you were putting your finger up to, sorry. Then we have consent agenda professional, where before we do the final approval, I'm going to amend item number 10.01 to include the name of the individual who we're approving tenure for, which is Jamie Stabile. Any other? Okay. And then.
Lauren, so that had no name on it, because the board hadn't discussed the recommendation, so it has been amended to add Jamie Stabile to 10.01, which is the tenure recommendation. Make the motion to add that.
Oh, so a motion to add the name Jamie Stabile to item 1001. Tom Stein, seconded by Chris Repetto. All those in favor? Seven, nothing. Thank you. This was a new one for me. I appreciate the help. And then consent, oh, wait. That was the same one. Okay. So consent agenda classified. Consent agenda special education. Nothing. Okay, so then can I have a, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda? Seven, nothing. So I do just want to make one, a couple of recognitions of items on the consent agenda. We have the approval of a $12,000 gift from the RMS parent organization to purchase outdoor furniture, so we thank them very much and appreciate all of the support our parent organizations give to the schools. We also have an approval of a $12,090 gift from the Rye Football Association to purchase football jerseys, and that's also, that section also included the agreement with the Friends of Rye Nature Center for their environmental science programs for up to $5,000, which we always want to recognize the collaboration we have with our local organizations. And lastly, just to point out that there is a agreement on here to work with a communications service called, the name is Polisi Jones. One of the things that we heard a great deal about last spring was how can we improve our communication out to the broader community, and so the district and board wanted to work with a consultant to help us further our reach, so that we can make sure that we are getting out to the broader community as much as possible. And I think those are all of the items to point out. So, any communications to and from the board?
Nope.
No? We should be starting to see our calls for committee members for our various committees coming out soon, so we hope the community will join a committee if they are interested. So I think that brings us to the end of the meeting. So can I ask for a motion to adjourn? Chris Repetto, seconded by Vivek Kama. All those in favor? Seven, nothing. Please join us for our next meeting on Tuesday, October 12, for the capital project update. Thank you very much.